There's always gotta be that one guy, man.
He's gotta put a quarter in the jar now.
Alright, um, on the regular agenda tonight. I'm gonna add a couple, um, number after twenty, I'm gonna add, uh, Tim Mahoney and Mary Shirley will be down here, I'll get them a chance to talk. And then we're gonna do, uh, actually what I'll do is I'm gonna do the block party one first. Do that as twenty-one and Tim and Mary will be twenty-two. Okay? Anybody else got any additions or corrections along with? Sorry, Brenda, let's just get a little go on here.
So where are the agenda again for it?
After twenty, we'll have, uh, block party, we'll do that one first.
Okay.
Add that in there and then Tim and Mary will be right after that, and that will be before the portfolio reports.
Okay.
Anybody got anything else?
Motion approved with said changes?
Second.
Brent did a motion, Dave did a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, consent agenda, anybody have any questions on that? It's pretty much laid out. Brent, was there anything on there that we should pay attention to or if it was beyond what you sent out the other day?
Um, the only item that was included for you is, uh, the Biggers application for fireworks permit. Uh, that was pretty self-explanatory, it's for the fourth of July.
Yep.
Same as they done last year consulting with fire. They've just asked, it was cleaned up afterwards and they had a couple of conditions on that permit. Uh, where they would have a couple of firefighters available and Biggers are responsible, would be responsible for those costs.
Okay. Yep, I believe he's doing it on the fourth of July at dusk is what I've understood that correctly.
My understanding.
So folks know that there'll be a fireworks display at night. Okay? Guys got anything else you saw or concerned about? Always I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
So.
Dave made a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then motion carries. Alright, anybody have a chance to look at the minutes from the last story?
Good from what I saw. Alright, motion approved the minutes.
Okay, Ryan makes a motion.
Second.
Second, Chelsea does a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, alright, moving along. Okay, we're at public comment, does anybody got anything they wanna talk about this evening?
You did that.
Dave, welcome back.
I've been on vacation.
I know, we were worried about you honestly.
You were concerned that I wasn't gonna be around. Brent's been helping me a lot on my questions.
Okay.
I wanna point that out too, but.
Why don't you introduce yourself though?
Okay, my name is David Gronley.
Good.
I live on eighty-first Avenue South towards North Dakota. Uh, I don't really have any questions tonight, I just have some opinions and things and thoughts that I think the council should address along with Brent and the attorney and stuff. Number one, you have your special assessment committee, okay? Uh, it's my understanding visiting with Brent that they are be working on some other special assessment areas. However, with the roundabout coming together and most likely there'll be a two to four million dollar special assessment hit, maybe? I would recommend that the special assessment committee starts meeting on that so they can get input from these people and everybody in town instead of after the fact. They know how much it is, let's talk about it before and have some meetings. And let the people, the talent know when these meetings are so they can come in and express their thoughts and concerns to the committee. That's one of my issues. Another one, and Brent has been helping with me on this, is yes, I'm a retired banker for forty-some years. I'd like to see the budget of the city of Horace and also a balance sheet. He's having a difficulty getting that all put together based upon past year's information. However, he's working on it. My understanding, gotta have it ready for the county by August or September so they can look at it and get it approved. And I'd like to see how that budget is going, how it's gonna be dispersed and what kinda excess money the city of Horace has. That, that comes into this question or statement. Visiting with Brent, looking at your seventeen financial statements and cash flow, income and expense. It doesn't look like, and I hope I'm wrong, doesn't look like there's any excess general fund money, rainy day fund money or whatever you wanna call it. It's, your budget is more or less washing out, your income and expense. So, my question is for the city council and Brent, is how are you gonna build that? You know, because if something major happens and you don't have the money to help fund it through the city of Horace until you do something, you know, I have a big concern about that. I know West Fargo has a substantial amount, I understand, they're a lot bigger. But, I think you guys, the council and ladies and also have to really, really sit down and analyze this and make a decision on how are you gonna build some general funds, some rainy day money or whatever you wanna call it? Cause I mean, that's very, very crucial if you have a problem. Another thing is my opinion on, you have the two percent sales tax, okay? The two percent sales tax that you have in the city of Horace is supposed to go to, um, infrastructure, stuff like that. I don't know where it's been going in the past and I talked to Brent and I think in the best interest of the city council and Brent and the city of Horace that he breaks that out on the balance sheet and the financial statement on the budget and have it designated to the areas where it's supposed to go. I don't know if it's been lumped into everything in the past or not. And you gotta address that issue at a later date, but that's my opinion on that. Another thing, as the city grows, you know, do you really need more council people? You know, you got four people up here for the last six months probably. And I understand one has a problem, can't make it. Do you, I don't know if Lucas could answer this. Is it required to have just this many or can you have more people on your city council as your city gets bigger? That's something I want you to look at too, cause that's pretty important.
One more, Dave.
Okay. Question, is the sewer line hooked up yet?
Sewer line is hooked up, however.
Are you using it?
Is not active because it is tied in with Lakeview Drive, I believe they're doing some improvements to the
Structures.
The structures there to line up with the road. Once that is complete, then the line will be active.
Said it was supposed to be up and running by April.
Yeah, that was our expectation and then with the coordination with Lakeview Drive, they're gonna have to do some minor adjustments there. And it was advised that it does not occur until after that construction is done.
So my biggest concern is the special assessment that's gonna happen on roundabout. I understand on eighty-first Avenue, we got a lot of traffic and that you guys are trying to stop it, I understand that. And it probably won't stop. But I'm more concerned, well, this roundabout's gonna be done in the middle of August probably, they say. I'm more concerned about the assessment on the, on the roundabout than my traffic right now. Because that's gonna disappear in about a month and a half, but special assessments won't disappear in a month and a half, so. That's just my thoughts.
Okay, fair enough, thank you, Dave.
Are any of those specials figured out at this point?
No. We don't have final numbers.
Not a lot, so not any?
We don't have final numbers yet.
Those won't be worked out till next year.
Yeah, so. Okay, anybody else got anything they wanna talk about tonight on this?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Mark Mussoff, seventy-five oh nine Sunnyside Street. More commonly known as the Sunnyside Shortcut. I've emailed a couple of council members. Uh, since May twenty-third, I've been in contact with Shane Winkles on the Cass County Highway Department at least four times. The city, uh, Corey and Chelsea a couple of times. Sergeant Jane Van Den Eyde of the, uh, Cass County Sheriff's Department. I've talked personally with Tony Crowe and the deputy, not this one, the other local deputy about the traffic. Flow, patterns, speed, you name it on Sunnyside. You've heard from me before, you know what my opinions are. While I realize it's only gonna be a month and a half, the concerns continue about not just, and that's enforcement, that's being stopped signs. We paid for that road, city had nothing to do with it other than administer the specials, each of us individuals, Brent Hanson included. Brent, thanks for doing the survey for Corey the other night. And I know that survey came back in favor of not shutting down Sunnyside Street. But of the, whatever that number was, about a third or forty percent were in favor of shutting Sunnyside down due to the traffic. I've done some informal traffic studies for ten-minute periods, just add lip and again, they're informal. And of the four that I've done, I can tell you eighty percent of those cars are not residents of Sunnyside or Brink. So, and I parked in places where I can look in the rearview mirror, look forward and see the detour over on the minimum maintenance road. And all of my numbers again are twenty percent of the vehicle count that I do are on the detour. There are thirty-four residents on Sunnyside, eleven on Brink residential units. If we have thirty-five cars going down Sunnyside in ten minutes, do you want me to extrapolate for you how long, how many cars there are during the day? It's more than the thirty-four residential units by about ten to twenty-fold would be my guess. My concern is the street and the damage that's being caused. Everything else is behind us, I've asked for the stoplight flashers, they've happened by the county. We finally got a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign up on the south side of Sunnyside where I live, just two houses in from the corner. Enforcement's been social, they've been somewhat responsive when I've called. Unfortunately, it seems to be a knee-jerk reaction. I walk my dogs every day for seventeen years, I know what's going on from the residents, who's got dogs, who lives where, what cars where. And I can tell you every crack in the street. And you can tell I'm starting to get a little worked up because I'm really irritated. I haven't got very good response, quite frankly. And I'm not the only one that's concerned, so as an advocate of Sunnyside, even though it may be six weeks away and granted, there's no incentive or dissentive to get that project finished early or late, which I don't understand. I got that straight from Northern Improvement at one of the meetings up at the Fargo, uh, West Fargo Park, uh, unit on Cheyenne and Thirty-second. I still recommend that we have temporary speed bumps put up on Sunnyside, at least three. And if that doesn't slow down traffic, I don't care if it's four weeks, four months or fourteen years, quite honestly. I am still, and I know there are at least a third of us in the neighborhood, they're not opposed to shutting Sunnyside down. I watched this afternoon from three until three-ten from Horace Lutheran Church. There's eleven residential units in the Brink addition. Ten minutes, six cars came south out of, out of the so-called closed road. Do you think all six of those cars were Brink residents? Yes or no?
Probably not, I'm guessing. People are driving through there.
You understand where I'm going with all this?
The problem is that the road isn't closed, right? We can't close the road, so because of the fire code, right? So that's.
Then it goes to the sheriff's department for enforcement. And if we have to set somebody there to ask people, do you belong here or don't you? Maybe they should, no, that's not my concern, I don't live on Brink.
But the deputy, either street, right? Either street can't say, you know, are you gonna stop somebody and find them just because they're not a resident of that street? That's the challenge, that's the challenge.
They might be visiting somebody.
Know that, number one, right? So, how, how do we, short of just getting everyone to slow down, that's about the only thing you can do.
Right.
And the trucks too.
Trucks and that's the signage.
The signage will prevent trucks from going. But I don't know, did you notice any trucks going through Sunnyside?
I haven't, my wife has and she forgot and I put on our Facebook page, if you see the commercial trucks,
Yeah, that's not supposed to happen.
Please notice, date, time and who the company is, call them, call the sheriff. Call Northern Improvement or whoever, you guys.
Right.
I'm not around every day. So those concerns behind us and then to the special assessment, part of the, uh, seventy-six Cheyenne Roundabout does not include reparations for Sunnyside because it's conveniently not posted as a posted detour or not listed as a posted detour.
It's never meant to be a detour.
So, the beating our road is taking going forward and again, the city never paid a dime to have that road blacktop, which I believe is supposed to have a lifespan of twenty
I'm retired fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty years. We're maybe halfway there and I can tell you every crack in that road, when I walk my dogs, they're down about that far now. And that's all from traffic. As those cracks and the rain continue and the traffic goes over, it's gonna hammer, hammer. Am I gonna be happy about having to pay out of my pocket for eighty percent of the traffic I've seen in three months that are causing about three to four years of wear on that road in that short period? You bet your boots are not.
Okay.
So I would like something addressed somehow, sometime about reparations to Sunnyside.
Have a conversation about what we can do, maybe, maybe it's, you know, a short-term could be just doing a crack seal. You know, so those can be taken care of, so that's, that's actually not a bad recommendation.
Thank you.
Just for example, I sat out in front of my house with my horse waiting for someone that was late. I had forty-two cars go by in thirty-five minutes before you put the sign up. But, you know, I mean, I don't know how special enforcement, the sheriff department, everybody else, how they can stop that. You know, I mean, you know, you can stop everybody, but you can't just let it down. You know, and I mean, the sheriff department's not gonna stop everybody and say, where are you from, do you belong in here, you know?
That's where the problem lies, I mean, we can't have somebody there twenty-four hours a day. And I understand that.
Sunny Side, did you come around the detour, guys, who brings it tonight?
Every night, I come to Horace for, for.
I see your red pickup with Alphacel.
Correct.
But, yep, back and forth until they put these new signs up. And now, I think they're using it for bike runs and stuff, so just wanted to find that out.
Yeah. So Mark, the other thing too, on here, like you said, we had fourteen yeses and twenty-three nos as far as the blocking of the road, so.
So about a third, roughly, two-thirds, one-third.
Yeah, so, and thanks Brent for doing that.
That tells me it's enough of a concern with this.
Right, it's a concern, but.
Not a majority or sure majority, but.
No one doubts that it's a concern. It's a concern on Brink, it's a concern on Sunnyside, so it it's just, that's the problem, is what do we do, what are our actions?
I sent Chelsea and Corey the pictures they had the day after Saturday, it was raining a lot. Clearly, the seat on their old bus that comes off a Brink that over to Sunnyside. And a little bit, very little that goes past.
Okay, alright, Mark, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, Lindsay, or Brent, you want?
Really quick.
Yep, okay.
Name's Brent Hanson, I live on Sunnyside also, I just wanted to like comment on Mark's, uh, thing. Um, in forty minutes, I counted a hundred and five cars that came through, uh, Sunnyside Street and that obviously was in the six o'clock timeframe, so everybody's getting off work, kinda coming in back and forth type of thing. Um, I, I understand that you, you can't really shut a road down, you, you can't block it because it, it's illegal to do so. Um, we're mostly, uh, concerned about the speed. Um, I had that digital speed limit sign in my driveway and, uh, it was set at sixty-five miles an hour to blink, uh, red and blue lights. And it got tripped once, so somebody on Sunnyside Street was doing faster than sixty-five miles an hour. Um, talked to the deputy, I'm not sure who it is that pulled it, who, who travels that, that sign back and forth? Weideman, there you go, uh, Weideman was the one and he actually got into the computer to check it and it was set at sixty-five miles an hour, so. The speed is a, it, it's a huge issue that we're more concerned about as opposed to like totally blocking the road off. If people would actually just, um, respect the road and drive, you know, accordingly and not like go off to the side. Cause when they're going off to the side, when they're passing people, they're breaking up the asphalt is what the problem is. And then that kinda eliminates the, the twenty-year term of the road, so. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention really quick and I can't remember if I talked to Corey about it or not, but on, uh, I think it's July twentieth, I gotta verify the date. One of the ladies down at the north end is gonna have a, uh, birthday party for herself. There's gonna be like eighty to a hundred people there, um, I'm gonna talk to Lindsay tonight about it, deputy. And, um, I'm gonna try and get people to park on both sides of the road to keep it open for fire trucks to come through and stuff. But I wanna make sure you guys are aware of it and she's also gonna have a DJ playing, I believe, I told you ten o'clock, I think, was what it was, so I think. Yeah, I think there's gonna be a DJ playing until ten o'clock, so you might get a couple of noise complaints. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna work our way through that and stuff, so I just wanna make sure the city council is aware of it, so. Alright.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll move along. Lindsay, you're up, let's just see what's what.
Well, this month we had, we were up a little bit, we had a hundred fifty-four calls, two crashes, four reckless driving with the nice weather, it's, every year happens. Zero juvenile complaints, nine animal calls, that's up again, a lot of dogs off leashes. Uh, one alcohol related, that was out of town, kind of over by the interstate, uh, actually on the other side of the interstate. Um, two medicals, seventeen site stations, thirty-four warnings, zero parking tickets and one drug-related which somebody found drugs in a car they bought in like, uh, up in the lights, so it's nothing. They were just turning the drugs and paraphernalia in. This number includes twelve calls related to traffic complaints as well as twelve calls per deputies attempting warrants. There was a burglary in progress earlier this month, we were able to get there quickly and take the responsible party into custody without incident. Please remember if you are using it, please make sure you're using the detour if you do not live on Brink Drive or Sunnyside Street. And with all the construction going on, please watch your speed. But otherwise, a lot of just traffic.
I have a question for the deputy. My question is, you know, like I live on Brink Drive and I'm talking about that's on Sunnyside or Sunshine or wherever it is. It says, you know, no through traffic, so if somebody drives through there, do you have the right to pick them up and give them a warning?
Or don't you? We would still like use speeding or stop signs.
Let's just say they're driving at twenty miles an hour and I through there, do you have the right to pick them up? No.
Has there been, so traffic slowed down on Main here too, cause that was another concern?
I've noticed it slowed down when I sit outside, I'll sit outside, have our hour of time and
Okay.
I've noticed it slowed down.
I really like those signs that they have on those rural towns.
They help, I think.
I think people didn't realize it's twenty-five miles an hour through town and they were just driving forty, forty-five.
Right.
So, I'm glad we did that. Um, on Brink, are you guys sitting there?
I sit.
Trying to sit there?
I sit in Brent's driveway quite a bit.
Okay.
Um, and I've stopped somebody and she's like, oh, I just saw you at the house for a call. Still need to.
You can sit by driveway if you want.
I can do that, yeah, I mean, I'm sure anybody.
Yeah, I don't think.
You can hide behind my trees and get them.
So.
That's, I just think, I don't know, maybe we just spend a little bit more time in the next couple of weeks here just trying to get people to realize they need to slow down.
And I can.
Tell them a hundred times, but it seems like it's not sinking in.
And I can sit in the lounge too and have all the other guys.
Yeah. Just try and pay attention to that area, a bit of corner here, see if we can get people to slow down.
And obviously the speeds are a little higher on Sunnyside, cause it's taller.
Plus, it's about, you know, it's about a half a mile straight run, other than the current S.A.
Right.
You know, with no stop signs, no speed bumps in there, people couldn't get up to speed.
Right, but I know like we've been talking with Tony on the fire department, speed bumps and fire trucks and all that stuff, they don't want them, you know? We're just, we're trying to come up with what's the best method here to keep fire and rescue happy, but trying to slow traffic down or trying to get them to go where they're supposed to.
Calls on the north side, so I mean.
Yep.
We are traveling through Brink, Sunnyside Street now.
Yep, I know, that's, like I say, we gotta come up with a happy medium here and I know we got six, nine, six to eight left here, but.
Can be done whenever.
Yeah.
One thing, I was gonna add from what Lindsay had was, uh, in discussions with Sheriff Droner, we'll probably be seeing some increased, uh, deputy traffic in that area for enforcement, so. Uh, met with him here about a week, week or so ago, showed him the dynamics that we're going through and then got his feedback of how could we change any signage. Uh, the barricades have a no trucks sign for the ones that are blocking, uh, Brink's on both ends. So technically no trucks should be allowed to, that is enforceable.
That is.
Yep.
The trucks is definitely enforceable.
And that was.
Yeah, it's obvious, because they live there and they have grain trucks and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, but it's pretty, it's pretty obvious when you see a semi going through there that they shouldn't be going through there. But, we should be seeing some increased presence from deputies in that area. Uh, it's not gonna be, you know, it'll probably be in waves or it'll be sporadic here or there uh, because it can't be there constantly. But they'll be, they'll be more visible again.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can have some more visibility, that would help.
He does, he requested more than just me and Ross down here to help out, so.
Okay, otherwise, any other concerns other than?
People need to slow down.
Yep.
I mean, the gravel roads are terrible, but.
Yeah, but, I know, that's the thing, drive too fast, that's how they get washboardy and.
Yeah, so other than that, pretty decent months.
Okay, alright, thanks Lindsay. Alright, so I got the First Link, Cindy Miller and Jennifer Holtz.
Just while they're getting up to the microphone there, uh, as you're probably aware, I believe it was two council meetings ago, we had requests for participation in the Community Navigator program from First Link. Uh, so Cindy is here to talk with you a little bit about that and express her thank you for the horse participating with that. Um, in addition, if you have any questions about what they do, uh, feel free to ask any questions on that, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Cindy Miller, I'm the executive director at First Link. Um, so we are excited to have you as one of our partners for the Community Addiction Navigator Program. Jennifer Holtz is with me today and she is that person, so she'll talk a little bit about the program. But just wanted to make sure that you know that First Link has been around since nineteen-seventy, so it's almost fifty years helping those in Cass and Clay communities. Um, it's a local twenty-four hour service when you're looking for resources, if you need to do listening and support. Um, we answer the two-in-one help line for the entire state of North Dakota. And so, you can dial two-one-one, like nine-on-one, eight-on-one, six-on-one and you're gonna be able to find help and hope um, through our resource, we have a database that's got about six thousand resources and then we have staff who can help also. All staff are trained in suicide intervention and crisis intervention. We are the only call center in the state that answers the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline also. So last year we had fif, over fifty-five thousand three hundred calls, ten thousand of those were suicide-related. And we only had to dispatch law enforcement about ninety times, so just talking to someone, listening to them, making a safe plan makes a big difference. And we're really excited now to be able to have the Community Addiction Navigator in place and that just started this year. And now we are looking at, um, you know, counties, I, I know Mary Shirley's here today too, so counties, cities of Fargo, Marhead, West Fargo, you know, Cass and Clay, um, other cities are all helping with this position too, so we wanna really appreciate, tell you how much we appreciate your help and support and I'll have Jennifer just tell you a little bit more about the program, but thank you.
Yeah, so, um, I just wanna thank, um, all the council members and, uh, people here in attendance tonight uh, for allowing us to come and speak a little bit about First Link. Uh, we launched in September, uh, right now, we're averaging about twenty new referrals every month. Um, the program is really new and it's still in its infancy stages, but we certainly can handle a much higher volume of calls and so, I, um, you know, I think our outcomes are really good so far, I take calls from family members, from concerned loved ones, providers, law enforcement, school officials, um, individuals who are dealing either directly with their own drug or alcohol, uh, concerns as well as, um, people who are concerned about someone else, so. Um, we offer some ongoing support and with the individuals that accept some ongoing support and I can kinda follow up, see how things are going, we have just an incredible, um, uh, outcomes as far as people who are cutting back or, um, abstaining from drugs or alcohol completely or taking steps toward treatment, um, recovery support services, so uh, just really wanna ease, ease the confusion, help people navigate the system, cause it's really confusing and things like transportation, insurance payment, that can, that can get really frustrating quickly when you're trying to get help, so. Just wanna encourage everybody to reach out.
So, who would we get in contact with to help the residents?
So, who would we get in contact with to help the resident, residents know that this is now a service that they can reach out to? I'd like to be able to get some content that we could put on the website, on Facebook or wherever, so that we can communicate this to residents.
Yeah, so, uh, I can email you information, you can post to the website.
Cause I'd like to just have a link or something that people can just click on, and it takes you right out there, and they can learn more about that. I'd like to be able to advertise that this is now available to you as a Horace resident.
Yeah, and, um, and, uh, this is, you know, this is being piloted in Cass and Clay counties too, so, you know, and, uh, hopefully eventually we'll, we'll roll it out, uh, across Red River Valley and, and western across the state, but, anybody who has questions can just dial two-one-one, or seven-on-one, two-three-five, seven-three-three-five, and you can get connected to information and support.
Is there a twenty-four dollar sign-on fee here for that?
Nope, no fee.
Your investment, twenty-four dollars provided for twenty-four hour, what does that mean in the back then?
Oh, that's just, uh, if you would like to contribute. That's just.
Okay, so it's, it's a free service?
It's a free service, it's confidential. Yeah, the program is, yeah, all of our programs are, are completely funded through donations or through contracts with other agencies, or through grants.
No, I think you guys do a great service, I kinda got involved with this when we did the mayor's Blue Ribbon Commission on addiction. So I started realizing what you guys did, and I think it's a great service, and I'm glad it was expanded, I was there, I was just kinda partaking in it, and are more aware of it now.
Yeah, I can't say how, um, how grateful we are to Horace for their, for their prompt response and just, um, just clear support for the program, we're really.
Alright, Matt, you're up.
There's a building permit matter that requires council's attention. Uh, the city permitted a building to be built in an easement. This is at six-twenty-one Fifth Street in Prairie View. This is the side yard, um, between Park Drive and Fifth Street, this, the yard, the side yard faces Five and a Half Street. There's a ten-foot access easement on the side of all the locks in Prairie View that's a block of street. Um, and when the building permit was approved, it did not take into account that, uh, the house has to be out of the easement. Uh, we've been working with the builder, it's a builder-owner, if I understand it correctly, we've been working with them to resolve the issue. And, uh, we're seeking council direction to allow for staff to permit the house to be built, uh, off the utility easement. Typically, this requires a fifteen-foot setback from the property line, but because of other considerations that has to do with the house that was permitted, I believe this resolves the city's oversight. So we're seeking council direction to move forward on allowing the house to be moved, or basically five feet of the house to be brought in. Cause what's important is we get the house off.
So the builder is willing to change the layout, change the footing structure to allow that?
Yeah, I'm the builder, and I wouldn't mind, you know, I'll do that, and I'm kind of in the process of doing it. The only thing that I wanted to ask you guys to take into consideration is maybe to issue me back the thirty-five hundred I paid to the city to help cover the cost of the re-excavation, concrete, and plumbing.
Go ahead, I want you to introduce yourself, so we got.
Sorry, my name is Cody, I'm the, the builder, the owner of the property. And I'm just asking you to take it into consideration, and I am in the process of moving it, and.
Well, the challenge is that the, I, I get that there's change that's gonna have to come into place, and there's, basically it's a shared responsibility here, right? Matt, I'm, I'm looking at you, Matt, and Brent, in terms of, there was a mistake that was made, but yet, you know, it's some hope, somewhere it, it fell down in terms of the inspection, but also, you know, it's built pretty close to the road, right? So, there had to be an easement there, so it was, it's, it's a little bit, I don't know, I don't know if we could recover all those, all those costs, but I guess, I'm looking for guidance.
Right, well, my, my concern is, I have two. One of them is it's important to get the house off of the access easement. The second is internally, we're kinda revising some of the ways that we look at these permits when they come in, to prevent this from happening in the future.
And like I said, I'll, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm getting it off there, you know, I'm working with, um, Brent and Matt, and they've been helping me do this, and I'll get it, I'm in the process of getting it off there, and I just wanted to.
You're basically gonna move the footing that's in the easement back, but it's still gonna be a variance, because it's, it doesn't meet the full setback that's in place for this, correct?
It would not, no.
Right, so.
For the city, it would, right? It would, I would meet the city's.
Well, that's what I mean.
If a variance was granted.
So that's basically what it means, is that in this case, it would have, we would have to grant a variance to, to allow you to be in this, you know, extenuating circumstance, right? It was, it was something that shouldn't have happened in the first place, but it did, alright, now, you know, the easiest solution out of here is to grant some sort of variance to not enforce the fifteen-foot setback. And it basically gonna enforce a ten-foot setback instead, correct? That's really what it boils down to?
Effectively, yes.
The, the main, the main goal is to stay out of the easement. Since you're dealing with the utility easement, we wanna be out of that easement, the setback, that would be up for.
So moving it back five feet would get it out of that utility easement?
Yeah, I believe it, was it five feet or six feet?
Five puts it, five puts it on the line.
It puts it at the line, which is, you know, you could be on the line, and it's, you can't be in that easement. So, yeah.
So, I mean, there's, there's two options too, I mean, you could rescind that original building permit, and then just have reapply for a new one, and ensure that the house is compliance with, in compliance with the city's ordinances, meaning move it the full fifteen feet uh, over to meet that, that side yard setback, and then just move forward with where the building should be, it's a done deal after that. Uh, the second option, if you're gonna do what this one sounds like with the variances, you're gonna have to go through that variance option, meaning it's gonna have to go to the planning commission, then to the city council. Which is just the procedure or the process that you have under your ordinances or for variances.
So I'd, I'd be in favor of just proceeding with the variance, asking the planning zoning to consider.
You don't wanna do that. You really don't wanna do that.
Well, I mean, that, that is a compromise in this situation, correct?
We don't compromise. No, you have to understand, you have to understand when we're talking about moving footings, when we move footings, we, you're gonna have a hard time coming up with, hardship.
Pass a hardship clause.
There's no footings for it, yeah, it's just excavation.
Yeah, it was, it was stopped before any footings could be poured, um, so this matter could be addressed.
That's a long process, it'll be a long process for it, you don't wanna do that.
Well, another consideration, and this is the, you're the city council, so you have the authority to override your, your own ordinances or your zoning. The city has the authority, the city council has the authority for zoning, um, but I don't know how you want to proceed with that. And if you go through the variance option, uh, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council. So those, I mean, those are, those are three options that you can consider, I guess, and so just the two, third one being the, you're the city council.
The variance wouldn't be heard until.
That's the, the issue there too, is there's the notice requirement.
Notice requirements, everything else, it wouldn't be heard for another three weeks. And then it has to come to you. And there's notice requirements.
So you're redesigning, starting back, um, another five feet, I mean, if you're, is that a big issue if you're having to redesign? Three-week wait and going through all that?
Well, the only great, right, coming into trouble would be, if you're saying just take, if I'm taking the five, original five feet off, it would be disgusting, right, no. I can swim that, but when you do, if I would have to go any more than that, that pretty much is gonna be a total scrap. Because I would have to, the bank would wanna see all the numbers, because of the, the house would change so much, the plans would change so much, that it would be a, it would be a start over for me, everything would be a loss.
I don't really, I don't know if we really feel comfortable just, just going past planning and zoning on that variance thing. It sounds like they're not going to.
No, you can't say that.
It's a, it's a process.
Gas performance, and the other, the other thing is, is the timing, is you're, you're looking at from today, at least five weeks.
Right.
Six weeks between planning, zoning, and coming back because of the notice requirements.
Or if we enforce the full easement requirements, then we basically, then it will be longer. Then you have to go back to the bank and base, basically redesign whole house.
And that'll, that'll lie out, but now it's gonna take a long, long time anyway.
Would there be any liability on behalf of the city council and the permit people if you have to redesign it all, and therefore loses something out of the?
Wouldn't know that, just off of this meeting.
Matt, what do you think? You were talking, you've got, you've been a little bit more close to this, you got some options?
I think it's in the best interest of the public to be, uh, fair and flexible where we can be.
Don't disagree.
I don't wanna give a, a specific recommendation, other than if there is a way to continue to work with the applicant, and, uh, continue what, you know, we, we've had a kind of a handshake agreement on what the next step should look like. Um, if there's a way to help deliver that to the applicant, my recommendation would be to do it.
He said we almost had a handshake agreement on it.
Right, cause I don't wanna delay this thing for you because of that at this point, I don't see the reason why we'd have to do that. I think what we're talking about here is shifting it over. Five feet is what you guys are talking?
There would be some change in, uh, overall design of the house.
Would it be enough?
Cause he's, he's right at, he's at the setback line on the other side of the property. So, there would be some shifting around on his part there.
But if that doesn't cause you having to go back to the bank and all that.
It wouldn't. He's gonna work in with me, and I'll just pay for it. I don't, I don't need anything, but if you guys have enough time, I'll pay for whatever it costs.
I mean, that's why I'm sitting here going, what's the downside here, gentlemen?
My, my suggestion would be let the planning commission vet it out, you know, it, the variances have been difficult for gain approved, uh, through the planning commission from past actions. However, uh, if, you know, the case could be heard in more detail by the planning commission with exhibit showing them, here's what we're facing, and then they can give a recommendation one way or another. Now, the recommendation may be in favor, it may not be, but then you have the planning commission's, uh, review of the matter.
But I know we are also delaying the game here too, because of this.
Yeah, you would, there would be some delay in order to meet the public notice requirements, but it would be the cleanest way to handle it, in my opinion, so, by actually going through the process instead of saying scrap it.
I'm alright with it, as long as you, uh, you have Lucas publish notice for both meetings. Right away, and the first meeting is compared for us, is our second one, I believe, in July.
Yeah, it's fifteen, fifteen.
So then the last one would be, it'd be your first meeting in August. That, those are the notice requirements.
I agree.
But like I said, that would be the cleanest way to do, to handle that situation, and I agree with Russ too about posting notices for that one, for the planning commission and council, that way you have the notices completed, and that'll help streamline the process as much as possible.
This isn't ideal, but I think it might be the cleanest way to get through this, we'll set you back a little bit, that way we're all on the same page.
The thing is with the, with the city's oversight, yes, but as a designer, those are key things that should be taken into account when you're, you know, designing a site, setbacks and easements, so.
This is a corner lot, right?
Yes.
That, that's, that's the issue, because corner lots have, have an additional ten-foot requirement. So you have sightlines around the corner.
So, your opinion, should I just, can we just scrap it and?
I mean, if, if you can afford to wait a few more weeks, I hate to for how you scrap it, if you can wait a few weeks to get this.
Six weeks, seven?
We're saying somewhere in that three weeks, right?
Well, the city council, I'm throwing this out there, you guys know, it's have a special meeting to just whip this through too. Totally up to you, it's just another option to speed this up, right after there's the city council could meet, we've done that.
Yeah, I know, that's why I say we could do that, I mean. That we could speed this up.
If you guys could tell me like a week or something.
Well, we get a notice in the paper on Wednesday for next Monday, so it'd be that Monday and then the following.
The biggest thing is gonna be the feedback from the planning commission, that's gonna be the next big step. So, it, it, the record comes out of there, you know, cause that's what we raised, the same is go back, suggest various to, to the easement, or to, yeah, to the easement requirements, and get their feedback, so we should know within a couple of weeks.
Planning commission is July twenty-third.
July twenty-third?
Twenty-third, so it would be able to make the July twenty-third agenda, or should be able to. Meeting all the notices, and then you'd be looking at either a special city council meeting, either later that week, or the week of the twenty-ninth, or the next regular city council meeting would be August fifth.
So, as late as August, yeah.
We could try and be accommodating here too.
But you could do, you could do. It's possible.
I'll beg your guys' mercy.
Trying to work with you.
I'm trying to, you know, too, and, I don't, like I said, I don't want to, to move it and pay for it, I just need you guys to say okay.
Yeah, that's, if you can hold off a couple of weeks, if it doesn't set you back too far, you can hold off a couple of weeks, let's try and make that work.
If they, they deny it, would you have the option to talk again about scrapping it?
I believe so.
The planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council, and the city council has the ultimate authority.
So, either approve or deny, the way that this is now, you, you would still, they would still hear this again.
Yeah, would come in front of us again, so.
But you'd probably wanna attend this, the planning zone meeting. Twenty-third, twenty-first. You definitely wanna attend that meeting.
And our, we'll coordinate with you. So, Matt or I will coordinate with you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Is there a date in mind for the city council to be willing to meet? For a special meeting, or a regular meeting, what are your thoughts?
We'll have to look at it later, because I don't have, I don't have everything in front of me to.
Work screen.
So, but yeah, we can let you know.
I'll just need it before, uh, Wednesday.
Sure.
Okay, Brenton, number ten.
Okay. Next one here is in regards to, uh, cash and lieu dedications for new developments. Typically, when a developer does a development within say a horse, they have, there's a ten percent land dedication, or they could do cash and lieu. The cash and lieu component historically has always been negotiated out between the park district, uh, city and the developer. Mainly park district and developer though, and park district will make a recommendation to the city council, and a request for that cash and lieu amount, and then the developer either agrees to it or not. And if the developer does agree to it, that's included as part of the developer's agreement. What we have had is a mixture of land dedications, more recently, they've been land dedications, but cash and lieu is something that developers often ask about, especially if they're doing a multi-phase development. They're doing the first addition, they'll do the land, later additions, they may do cash. Other communities, I'll use West Fargo for example, because they do lay it out in a fashion that would be asking the council to consider, is based on the type of land use for that development, so if it's a hundred percent residential development, there's a certain rate applied. If they have, say, a hundred acre development, and sixty is residential, and forty is, uh, like a mixed use, or a mixed-use commercial, multifamily, then it would have a combination of some of the residential rate, and then some for that multifamily or commercial. But that rate structure is agreed upon by the city council, and it makes it a lot easier for developers, park district, and staff to be able to be very upfront with the developer, saying if you're going to do a hundred acre development of this type of practice, it's gonna cost this much in a cash and lieu. it's going to cost this much in a cash and lieu. You could do the land dedication or the cash and lieu. The, like I said, it takes some negotiation out of it, makes it be more upfront. Uh, the City of West Fargo, their structure for residential, they charge a dollar fifty per square foot. For multifamily and general commercial, they charge three dollars per square foot. Industrial is a dollar twenty-five per square foot. And then they do have another one for commercial located along arterial I ninety-four. They charge four dollars and fifty cents per square foot. Uh, this would result in significantly higher cash and lieu amounts from developers than what has been done in the past in Horace. However, if you do follow the same structure or slightly modified structure as our neighbors, it does make it to where they're familiar with this process already. So a lot of the developers doing business in Horace are already familiar with doing this in West Fargo or, or Fargo. I'm unaware of Fargo's structure on it, but, um, so this is, uh, this was brought, you know, brought to our attention from the park district. Justin Gerbenson is here. If you had any questions from his experience, uh, working with the West Fargo Park District in regards to West Fargo. Also for Horace, I think it'll make everybody's lives a lot easier, uh, both his and mine in regards to interacting with the developers on these. Like I said, it takes the negotiation out of it and it's just being upfront. Here's how much it's going to cost to play ball in Horace or a development. So.
Yes, Russ.
The ordinance states that the city may establish by resolution of the city council annually the acceptable value for residential, commercial and industrial designated land for consideration of market value or other ways of doing it. But you have the ability to set a resolution to set these. And it's already in the ordinance.
We can use the ordinance as it is, just set the resolution, use the resolution to set the rates.
Yeah, just, in fact, basically this was written, uh, this was largely West Fargo's.
Yeah. So this allows you, just like we have our rate fee, our fee structure resolution, this will allow you to have a resolution tied to uh, cash and lieu dedications for new developments. My recommendation would be to follow the same structure, just developers are very familiar with it. Or a very slight, or you know, slightly lower. If they have, you know, where they have a dollar fifty for residential, maybe a dollar and a quarter. But like I said, there's that familiarity with it. Uh, land prices in Horace have gone up over the past year, uh, quite a bit. So we're, we're not far off and we do have quite a few areas in Horace that are not, are in very close proximity to Fargo and West Fargo. Where we have developments coming our way. Also, they're not far away from those locations.
If you, if you have a new development out here, where you're going to charge them so much, how much revenue would the City of Horace get upfront then? Let's say for this new development you got going out here.
Yep.
So that money you'd get to put in a general fund to have there, where does it go?
Well.
Into the park district.
Park district. Well, it would go to either the park district or if the council decided they would go for city, you know, for the city or for public facilities. It's intended for public facilities. Uh, park district makes a request for that amount. So per acre, a dollar fifty residential, residential development. If their land dedication was one acre, they would have a dedication of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
And how many acres did they usually put in a development for that?
It varies. Um, the last one we did, I'll take Cub Creek for example, is about a hundred acres ballpark. So you're looking at pretty substantial cash and lieu dedication there. Yep, they dedicate ten acres.
So six hundred grand.
Yep. Versus, um, Airwood, for example, is a smaller one. That's only about thirty acre or about, is it about thirty acres? Twenty, twenty to thirty acres? So, yeah, twenty-seven acres, so.
So that goes to the park district, the park district can allocate, they'll do parks or you can use it for.
It goes to, it goes to the city and then the park district requests the money from the city.
Yep.
And if the park district allocated, can we fix Sunshine Road?
It would be used for public facilities, typically for parks, uh, bike paths, sidewalks, different things like that. So.
Cause the park, uh, Justin Gerbenson, I was recently hired by the, uh, Horace Park District, but, but typically the, the park always looks at land first. It's just if there's, you know, at Cub Creek, um, you know, let's say we only want an eighty acre park, that'd be a two acre difference. So that, that's where, so all these big residential developments, you, you, the, the park never takes the full ten acres of cash and runs and takes off of it. It's, they always do land first and then it's just these kind of border areas that would be like around commercial areas or stuff like that. And then I'm also the finance director for West Fargo Parks. And so what we do is if we do get any cash and then we keep it in that neighborhood. So it's not like we take cash and then from the south part of town, put it in the north part of town. We always keep it within that surrounding community. So the developer kind of sees the, the benefit of it. And all this kind of originally started when I started about three weeks ago. The Lost River was kind of out of whack from what I was seeing in West Fargo. Cause they're, they essentially on that first addition paid ten cents a square foot. And so I knew what prices were in West Fargo. So that's what kind of started this whole process of, you know, and like Brent said, all these developers that I see here all the time, been dealing with in West Fargo for the last fifteen years. So they know the game that they're, you know, they, they're aware of paying these fees and stuff. So although the numbers might look big and stuff, everyone who's doing business in town has been playing this game for ten, fifteen, twenty years. So it's, it's not going to be a surprise to them. And then, and then a really neat example of how we use cash in West Fargo, for example, how, and how this will trickle to Horace at some point is my office is at the Rusted Rec Center and our first phase cost about eight point six million dollars. I only had to bond for six point six million dollars because we had about two million dollars of cash and lieu that we hubbed together from that surrounding area. So that, that's kind of a, a prime example of, you know, you take the funds that the developer uses and it, it benefits the whole surrounding development. It helps him outsell, it helps him sell lots. And it helps the, uh, the park district because then you don't have to, you know, borrow as much money and stuff. So it's a win-win for everybody really, so.
So do you need a motion too?
If you would like to set by resolution fees tied to it, uh, it would be a motion and like I said, for West Fargo, they have residential dollar fifty, industrial dollar twenty-five, uh, multifamily, multi-use and general commercial is three dollars. And that's per square foot. So if you'd like to follow the same, you can. If you'd like to recommend a different amount, you can.
And then, and then each year, West Fargo looks at it, the city commission, because what was happening years ago, five, ten years ago, is Larry Wile and Tim Solberg, they're getting hit by ABC developer. They, they're getting tired of negotiating with every single developer while the city commission just set the price. And then that's, you know, everybody knows upfront, staff or the developers, everybody, because they're just getting worn out by, you know, dealing with five different developers, five different negotiations. So that's why about three, four years ago, they just, here's the price, here's what it is. We revisit it each year. So it, it's, it's worked fantastic.
So you have development agreements already signed, right? With some people, we're having, you know, these doing. So is that in that or have they already committed?
Yeah, the cities have always requested. It's just that what they're changing now is the amount and the value of it.
Development agreements that you've signed with the developer, is there a dollar value in that?
Depends on the development. Like Cub Creek got a new one, they did land. So you're not going to get a value from that.
So there's, there's no cash involved with the one, the one by the high school because it's all land.
I think the statement is we're not going to change any current sign. They either had land or they had a given dollar amount. We're just stating the dollar value moving forward if we approve this.
Right.
That's the first, first additions to the next additions will be determined.
Because there, there's other options under the ordinance where the, the value could be determined by even the developer could send it to the, to the park board and the park board tells the planning commission and they tell the city council. And that's how it's been done traditionally is, is that's where you want to think. And so the park board has been satisfied with those amounts. Um, it's just now.
Cause we just wanted to get ahead before all these developers are getting in and
Yep.
And we want to set this so everybody knows upfront. So it's a fair game for everybody, so.
I have a motion to.
Matt, you got some rules.
If, if you were to make a motion to approve the, this recommendation, uh, I would want some clarification on if the developments that we have in entitlement process now will be grandfathered in to the old requirement or if everybody now is required to follow, you know, the new rate.
How many do we have in process right now?
Two that are for sure cash and lieu.
Do you have numbers negotiated already?
Uh, one of them is Maple Lakes. And so, yes.
Maple Lakes is, that's one, that one's done. That one's, uh, honored agreement there from a previous.
So that I want it. And it'd be the Hess subdivision.
My opinion would be if anything that's, I'd just start as of today, anything that's already in the works, that's not fair.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what I was going to recommend too, just otherwise they're changing the game.
Right.
So I'll make a motion to create that resolution for the set fee structure for the development.
Okay.
To Manchusboro.
To Manchusboro, uh, write, write them out. So use those and to not grandfather in as Matt points out, those developments that are in process.
To grandfather.
To grandfather.
To grandfather, okay.
Yep, okay. All right. So Brian made a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does a second.
Can I request an amendment?
Go ahead.
Being that we are, you know, that we are a little bit newer at this, would you be open to say something like doing ten or fifteen percent less than West Fargo? Just to give ourselves a little incentive. I know it's a big jump already.
Not sure if it's necessary.
Yeah, I don't think.
West Fargo's a pretty much built up, to be honest with you. It's all.
And I mean, we're gonna.
You guys only play your own.
I don't know, we necessarily want to give anybody a discount for coming up with those. I mean, the park district needs money to work with. So I, I'd much rather advocate for getting them more money.
And I don't know if the developers give them a discount, but a lot of prices, to be honest with you.
I'm not sure. I honestly don't know.
I'm saying that lots of West Fargo, they discount even because they're in Horace. I think they're charging the same price.
Oh, no.
Brian, you lost the video, please. Sorry, you lost the video, please.
You don't have to accept the amendment if you don't want it, Brian, so.
I guess.
No, okay.
Okay, so as it is without the amendment, we had a, a motion from Brian and a second from Chelsea. So all in favor, say aye.
You're aye. I'll call that one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I want to roll call that one.
Okay, sure. Okay, I'll recall it. Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous passes. All right, so you guys take care of that, then that squared away.
Yep.
All right. Brenton, you got number eleven?
Yep.
Mayor?
Yep.
Can I just jump in here? Um, I think it would be possible for us to jump in?
I'd have, I'd move you up on the schedule if you want. I mean, I can do that.
Okay. I don't know, I was told to be here at six thirty, so.
Yep. And I know I got you guys penciled in here for a little later, but, um, if you want to, we can do that.
That would be wonderful.
Okay, so why don't we do that then? We'll move you guys. I got, I've got you sitting at twenty-one. I'll bring you up here and move you into right before eleven. So Mary or Tim, did you guys want which?
Mary, you first then?
Go ahead, ahead.
Well, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Mary Shirley. I'm chair of the Cass County Commission and chair of the FM Diversion Board of Authority. I just want to thank you all very much for allowing us to join you this evening. I've been requesting this meeting for months and appreciate, uh, the opportunity to finally, finally visit with you. Horace has always been a significant part of our Cass County metro area. And Horace has been an important consideration through the development and the design of the diversion project. We've always wanted to keep Horace on the inside of the project even when others have suggested otherwise. And I have fought hard for this community. With the compromise changes to Plan B, in order to move the diversion project forward, Cass County took the brunt of those negative aspects of the compromise. Part of that compromise was also moving the project closer to Horace. And I can understand the negative reactions because as I said, I had the same negative reactions. Over the past six to nine months, I have had more than a dozen conversations and meetings, and meetings with Mayor Peterson. I know our county engineer, Jason Benson, the Fargo mayor and his staff, and our consultants with the diversion authority have also had numerous sit-down meetings with representatives from Horace. With an understanding of the concerns of Horace, many steps have been taken by Cass County, Fargo and the diversion authority in good faith to do what can be done to address them. While still providing the flood protection that the entire community, including Horace, needs. Some of the items that we have done in good faith directly because of the talks with Horace include Cass County, which is a host of infrastructure needs across the county, has prioritized multiple transportation improvement projects that have a direct benefit to this community, including funding towards the roundabout that's currently under construction. Cass County has a five-year plan for transportation improvements and has committed over twenty-two million dollars towards transportation projects in southeast Cass region and that have a large direct and indirect benefit to the City of Horace. These prioritizations are a direct result of conversations on a deal with Horace. Fargo has had multiple conversations with Horace about the future of water and sewer service and understanding the needs of the city now and in the future. Fargo has an infrastructure study underway which includes making provisions to serve the Horace service area. These types of studies are the groundwork that provide the data and justification for the use of taxpayer dollars to expand very costly infrastructure beyond Fargo's needs in order to accommodate Horace's future needs. Right now Fargo does not need infrastructure beyond sixty-fourth avenue. Maybe this study will show additional needs in Horace if Horace is a partner. The diversion authority has asked MetroCog for assistance with the project's recreational plan, which has amazing potential for the City of Horace to further tie our communities together and offer residents incredible recreational opportunities that otherwise would not be possible without this coordination. In asking for MetroCog's assistance, we specifically asked the City of Horace to serve on that selection and advisory committee. We understand that the diversion project has impacts and those impact the City of Horace and to others who all have relationships with that can be strained by those impacts. But those impacts, while often talked about, do not excuse us from addressing the benefits of the project which are considerable to this community. The benefits to Horace do not just come within the city limits. These benefits protect residents' jobs, access to healthcare, entertainment options, and will protect the West Fargo School District. When the Horace School High School opens, those students will come from homes in Horace, West Fargo and Fargo, all which benefit from the diversion project. Horace is a rapidly growing community with a lot of future potential. This is an issue that's been faced before in the metro area. We've all seen what went well and what did not. And I think there would be agreement that everyone was more successful when we worked together rather than when we worked against one another. I will be honest, after months of encouraging my fellow county commissioners and fellow DA board members to act in good faith towards these items dealing with Horace, I was shocked to be called out to your meeting tonight, not as a community partner, but because of a threat of a lawsuit. I'm happy for the opportunity to be here to clear the air on what we've been working on because I want to get back to my boards and continue to advocate for our communities working together. This evening I've brought, um, Eric Dodd, who works with A two S, um, a program consultant. Mayor, Mayor Tim Mahoney is here and Jason Borboon from the City of Fargo can also, excuse me, Nathan, to, um, address any of your concerns that you specifically have with the City of Fargo. Um, you know, we, we have lots of presentations that we would love to share with you and your entire community on how, how the alignment goes around Horace, how it's benefited, the impacts that it has on your slumping and your river uh, along the Cheyenne. I know there's been a lot of talk about that. But we can't have those conversations if, if you don't include us. And so that's, that's just what we're asking for is, is, you know, shine some light on this, um, conversation. And I want to make sure that your community citizens understand the benefits of this project to them.
Good. Thank you, Mary. Do you want to?
Just a few comments. Mary's got a summary of a lot of Tim Mahoney, Mayor of Fargo. Uh, Cory and I have been working together quite some time on this project, trying to figure out things to go and Brenton as well. We've been at those meetings. We brought our engineers together as well and tried to sit down with the community. Part of the issues, our party is we always have to, you know, I was watching, we're talking about permits tonight, how long things take, a variance takes. We try to identify what do we need and what needs to happen here. And there's three different partners. And we have Cassboro with us as well as us, as well as Horace. So a lot of times it's trying to figure out what does the community need and what, what makes sense for all of us in, in doing that. Uh, we have to convince the governor, it's okay to go from sixty-four to Horace because we think that makes regional wastewater work real well and water work real well. You have some needs in your water system we think have to be addressed. But the way, you know, we work is we have to have the engineers go back, study everything, come back to study, to you guys, study to us. It's a, this is what your capacity. You have some needs in your water system we think have to be addressed, but the way, you know, we work is we have to have the engineers go back, study everything, come back to study, to you guys, study to us, it's a, this is what your capacity, these needs are, here's what you need, here's what goes on. And I've heard, I've heard four different options of what our needs of Horace are, and I don't know what the final ones are, so bearing the fact the government does work slowly sometimes, we have to get those studies back. I'll just say that we've been meeting with your, your mayor, and we're very committed to work with Horace to do regional water supply, wastewater supply. We're very committed to try to get that infrastructure to you before the school's done, makes sense. The county's gone ahead with paving of that road, we have to kind of figure out how we're gonna finish that last part as well. And we're anticipating a road going south of seventy-six so that we can have a loop or circle for those high school work together. Bernie Dartis has reached out, and we're gonna meet together, the threesome, just see how can West Fargo, Fargo, and Horace work together, so it works best for everybody's communal issues. So all I'm coming here tonight for is that Corey did talk to me and said, I don't like some of the legal terms, can we sit down and talk about them? And that's part of what John Shockley was, is what are the things you don't like? And to be frank with you, a lot of times when attorneys write things out, it sounds sometimes not, that's not exactly what I thought we were talking about.
And I think that's what happened.
And, and so, and we're here too, 'cause we're saying, okay, if you didn't like it, please tell us what parts you don't like, and let's change it. But our intent is to work with you, and I think the county's tried to do a lot of stuff that works with your, your group as well. So, we're a little surprised about the contested hearing discussion and that option, and of course, that's always an option for, but we would like, you know, when we have to face legislative body, we're gonna have to go back for more money, and part of the money is funding. It works far better for us to do a lot of our stuff, saying we're working with Horace, this is what we both agree on, and this is a solution, we think, for both communities. So, thank you for taking us on tonight.
And just to follow up on that, Tim, we're gonna get together on July eighth and have a follow-up conversation with the engineers, to be able to get this thing moving again. Jim, that's probably gonna involve you as well. I know some of the things that we had talked about, you know, the water, things like that, we have done some specking on that, 'cause I think when we had our prior meeting. When was that? A couple months ago?
It's probably, it's probably been at least two, two and a half months ago.
Um. You know, that we can go forward from that, that conversation, you know, like I told you, this and that other letter, we'll just kind of put that aside.
And David, I would say, don't discount your lots, 'cause I'll tell you right now, you guys are, are the place people wanna go, it's just, I mean, you're, you're gonna hit the sweet spot for a while, 'cause West Fargo's about as big as they can presently develop, and we're competing with Lo Mar's on the other side, so.
And that's, the, the thing is, is, you know, from, from our standpoint, I think we've eighty percent of the way there, right, in terms of what we agreed to, and Mary Shurley, we've talked with Jason Benson, and we've come to that agreement on the things that the infrastructure work, uh, that we, we like, we want it. Now it's just a matter of, you know, let's, let's get the rest of that MOU nailed down, and I think that's, that's really where we're at, right?
Yep, I agree.
And so it is, I don't, like I said, I think we're eighty percent of the way there, it's just getting that last twenty percent done, and frankly, it's timing, right? It's, we're, we're up against a timing window that's affecting us.
Well, again, we did send something over a couple months ago and haven't heard anything back, so that's kind of part of the head scratcher, is, you know, then, then all of a sudden we hear something, and, and so we, I just wanna make sure that everyone has all of their questions and concerns addressed. A lot of conversation tonight about parks and development, and I mean, this could be a really cool thing for Horace. So we're gonna have, you know, bike paths and various things that, that could be potential, um, potential recreational aspects of it, I mean, there's just a lot of pluses. A lot more pluses than minuses, and, and, you know, we can show you the negatively impact acres, you know, versus positively impact acres, and, you know, it's, it's a win for Horace. I, I get, I get that it's not a win for every single person, but as a community as a whole, this, this can be an exciting time for them, and, you know, we just wanna work together, that's, that's all we're really asking, and, you know, in order to do that, as, as the mayor says, you know, we, we need to be together with funding too. You're asking for things that are gonna cost money. Right now we did not get the, the funds that we were asking for at hand this month. And it would've been nice if this, if this body would've supported us, and maybe that would've turned out differently, but, um, here we are, so, you know, we're, we're looking at our budget as well, so. It's just important that, that if any of you individually have questions, please reach out to us. If you'd like us to come and, and really show you the entire project and, and in depth, happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to ask some questions.
Go.
Certainly.
So, we've been on this, uh, project of, uh, understanding memorandum for six months, something like that? And I understand there's been discussions back and forth, that type of stuff, but from your perspective, how long should something like that take?
Well, I, I think what happened on the first memorandum of understanding, uh, all of a sudden some items came up that weren't there before, City Hall would be one of those items that came up, so there was some general understandings we had, when we got the next one back, it had a lot on that. And to be honest with you, the, what happens in memorandum of understanding, that translates into a legal agreement. And legal agreement basically was sent two months ago, and we haven't heard until attorney called last Friday, and then said, here's the concerns. Two months ago he could've responded, told us that, so I don't know what held that up. Corey called, I mean, said, hey, can we get together and meet again and talk, and that's been in works for two vacations.
So if we've been slow on something, fine, but.
No, no, but if you have, if you have objections, those have to come out. And if we make a, let's do it this way, David, how soon do you wanna get it done? So if you wanna get it done in two, two months, then let's try to get it done.
Yeah, I mean, let's get it done two months, four months, whatever it is, let's agree to something, but the side is, is that it, it starts and stops, it starts and stops, and if we're all in this to get this done, you know, I, I just, I guess I don't see from our side that things are getting, whether we're stocking something, or whether somebody else, but it's hot, and then it's cold. And then, do we have to light something, it, it feels like we have to light something up again to say, why can't we get this going? Now again, I understand we all work on budgets, and we all have terms, and we all have to, you know, I'm not saying this all has to be done tomorrow, but let's get something that has, I mean, a state of teeth to it. I mean, the side is, is we can talk all we want about benefits and all these types of things, but I can tell you, there's probably people in this, in this area that, you know, I'm not gonna see a benefit to it, but we understand that there is a commitment that we as a community are doing to the whole metro region, and we benefit, but you also benefit from us. And the work base and all the people, as you said, the development that are coming, those types of things, we need to work together on this, and I agree a hundred percent. But, we were never at the table, even when the point that it came that it's gonna hurt us significantly, we were told the day before. And that set a lot of people off. So now we're just stating, we need something in return, we're not trying to get hundreds of millions of dollars, we want something done that helps all of us, that you said was projects that we wanna benefit both communities, and yes, you have moved some up, and that's what we wanna see. But, I feel like every time we wanna see something done, we gotta do something like this. Now, if we stalled something, apologize for that, but why is it that we have to stake, make a statement like this, that we wanna move this forward?
And Nathan, I'll put you on the spot a little bit, 'cause the engineering part is part of it, how long is all that process gonna take?
The process of studying our infrastructure, it'll be a little wild, because we have to, I mean, we also have another party of Cassboro Water that needs to get involved here as well, to determine their needs as well, and how the project's impacting their facilities as well, so.
So if we set a date at September first to get this thing done, even if, even if the engineering people have reported about it, we have a path forward, right? Would that be reasonable?
I, I'm reasonable, four months, I'm reasonable, five months, whatever it is, but I wanna see progress, maybe, I want us on our side too as well, to make sure that we're moving this along, and we're all gonna come to some type of agreement.
What, one, one thing I do wanna point out is, we have been, Councilman Fallon, you've been correct about, it's been difficult to get movement on this, and I'll, I just wanna bring an example, so you're aware of, just that July eighth meeting. That's taken about a month to get a meeting set up, where when we were going through legislative session, for example, we were able to get a meeting almost immediately. So, that's a little difficult, when we're trying to get MOU worked out, or this MOU when it came back, the last draft came back, and majority of items were pretty much scrapped. From Fargo and diversion authority, so that's where the council was going, we haven't seen any of that, you haven't seen anything.
Right.
And first, it was scrapped, what we thought, we almost had, the council, the city, thought an MOU agreement was nearly there, between elected officials. Went back to the drawing board, almost entirely, and that's where the frustration, I believe, lies, is that, that agreement went to almost being done, to, ready to go to governing bodies, to. Completely back to the drawing board.
And I hope you can understand, you know, that that goes, that frustration goes back both ways. I mean, my understanding was that we had the support of, of your council, and the next morning, um, there was testimony before the legislature in North Dakota against this project, so. You know, it's like, okay, I guess we weren't that close to an agreement. So, I mean, there has to be some good faith trust here, and, and a lot gets lost that way, so let's just make sure that we are continuing this dialogue. The other thing, you know, I think it's very confusing with people, but, you know, you're one entity, Fargo's another one, Cass County's another one, the diversion board's another one, Cassboro Water's another one. So you gotta pull, you know, you and I can agree on what we want to, on what road we're gonna prioritize next, but, you know, we gotta get, we gotta make a difference for everybody, and, and so that's, that's part of what's tricky about this. But I think, I think everybody wants the same thing, I really do, and, um, I, I strongly believe that this is, this can be a win-win for everyone.
So I'll come out of the meeting we have in July, and for your question, let us start setting some realistic dates.
That's what I was gonna say.
'Cause I don't have the attorney here, so I hate to say, oh, two months, and they'll tell me, two months. You want dates, so it's fairness to you, when we have our meeting, and we'll sit down.
And then, we'll get those, we'll get the people, get the engineers involved, and they can give us a better timeline, so that we can, but, 'cause that's the thing.
Give your council and your community an idea.
Plus, we can push all of our side too, that if we have dates that we can work towards, we're all working towards something, so.
So, do you guys have any other questions? Jim, you got anything you wanna, 'cause I mean, we kinda talked about this this morning a little bit too, so. So, like I said, let's just plan that July, get through that July eighth meeting, and then I'll report back here, and you're in on this one too. We'll report back here, and we can go from there, on that.
And thank you for letting me observe your meeting, because you guys have a huge agenda. You thoroughly discussed it, I mean, we have big agendas too, but I really appreciate it, it's very personal to smaller community, the people in front of you, so.
No, I appreciate you coming out, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mary, for coming out this evening.
Appreciate your time, when you do.
Thank you. Nathan, thanks. Eric, thank you. Alright, so, go back to eleven, then. Brent, you got that one, right?
Yep.
Yep, okay, go ahead.
Okay. Get a second here, real quick, to get my items. Okay, the next item here is, uh, state aid distribution discuss, discussion regarding that. Uh, this one, Mr. Croker and I will touch base on it together, uh, 'cause he can talk about legalities and look into, um. What advice have we gotten from the treasurer's office and League of Cities? In a recent publication from the League of Cities, North Dakota League of Cities, it talked about state aid distribution going to other entities such as the Park District. It refers to, in century code, and this is a guidance, please correct me if I'm wrong, Lucas, that, that percent of state aid distribution that would go to the Park Board, or any other entity, would be equal, or no less than the amount that was dedicated to the Park Board back in nineteen ninety-six. The trouble is, financial records don't go back that far, 'cause they've been disposed by, by that time. But, our saying is dedication was, didn't exist, and even currently, the land dedication, or not land dedication, the cash, the cash from state aid has not been occurring, uh, from the city to the Park District, even year to date, right now. In talking a little bit with Justin, and this may require further discussions and negotiations, um. He's been asking for a number of how much we'd be willing to dedicate to the Park District. In the city of West Fargo, they do twenty-eight percent of their state aid distribution. I don't, I don't see twenty-eight percent, that would be a significant hit to the city's budget. Give you a ballpark, in two thousand seventeen, that number was a hundred seventy-four thousand five hundred forty. We, with our city's growth, we're right around two hundred thousand, maybe a little more than two hundred thousand dollars in state aid that we get. So if you had twenty-eight percent, that adds up quite a bit, that is a, that would be a hit to the city's budget. Now, in ever good faith, we should negotiate a rate. The League of Cities has recommended right around that ten percent range, and for the Park District and the, and cities to discuss it and work it out. So my suggestion would be to, for council to consider a ten percent dedication to, uh, the Park District, sharing of the state aid distribution. If there's a number different, that's up to this body and working with conjunction with the Park Board, and if, Lucas, you can expand on anything else.
Yeah, so every quarter, you guys get money from the state of North Dakota.
Yep.
It's a chunk of change, I think, uh, last quarter, sixty thousand dollars, quarter before that, I think it's fifty thousand dollars.
Yep.
Under the century code, you are required to distribute a portion of that money to the Park District. The city of Horace has not done that in the past, the Park District has not asked for it in the past. So I, I talked to the North Dakota Department of Treasury, to just ask him, you know, what's going on, what are the other cities doing? Uh, and he laughed, and he said, you know, we're getting this call more and more, because of that article that went out.
Well, let's, let's back up, it, it started, 'cause I started three weeks ago, and I was going through their books, and I, there's no state aid payments coming in. And, and so that's how this whole thing started, 'cause I'm, I'm starting to take over stuff, and obviously you guys didn't know about it, they didn't know about it, but that's why they hired me, is to kinda, kinda like you guys are doing on here, bringing up a level, I'm trying to bring the Park District up a level. And so that's what I inquired, I said, hey, did you guys know such and such?
Well, let me finish before you end up all, all your side, let me just.
One more time.
Wrap up my stuff, it's almost done. Okay, so I called the North Dakota Department of Treasury and said, what are other cities doing? Uh, he said, you know, this question has come up often, so he talked with the League of Cities, League of Cities says they don't have an answer. The best case scenario is if you can go to the Park District and say, hey, how much money were you receiving in nineteen ninety-six? Problem with that is nobody has those records, nobody goes back that far. So he said, what cities, what they recommend, is that the two entities meet, discuss, come up with a compromise on what that percentage should be. So the League of Cities told the North Dakota Department of Treasury that the two entities should work together, come up with that percentage. Percentage that they offered was anywhere between ten and twenty percent. And so that's where we are today, is what is that, that percentage that the city and the Park District are comfortable with? It is required by statute, so you do have to distribute a portion of the, the state aid, but percentage is what the two entities need to work together, compromise, and come up with.
And the state aid says up to thirty percent, and, and I think we're getting way too much complicated here, I mean, you guys have basically modeled a lot of stuff after West Fargo and Fargo, and we've been doing seventy-two, I've been at the park since two thousand five, and we've been, ever since, ever since then, we've been doing seventy-two, twenty-eight. And, and that might be a, a lot to ask right up front, but I'm just saying, I mean, all the stuff's getting a little bit too complex, I mean, we're mirroring the park dedication, you guys have mirrored a lot of the ordinances after West Fargo, so I think, we don't need to overthink this too much. It's just a matter of you guys need to decide how you guys want it to impact your budget going forward.
I think what we'll probably do is, we'll probably have to work our way up to that, twenty percent right now would be pretty good, not. But we're not, I mean.
Well, you also stated early on that there's other entities, does this state Park District only, or is it state in the century code?
It refers to other.
I'm guessing it's a lot of small towns.
Other taxing entities.
So what other taxing entities do we have? We have Park District and Fire.
Fire.
Well, and I found out that Park District hasn't been levying the recreation fund either, so that's another five mils, so it's just, it's just, I'm trying to clean house here and get things up to standard, 'cause what happens, when everyone's gonna be moving to town here, they're gonna want amenities like Fargo, West Fargo has, and I'm, I'm trying to get, just like you guys are doing with infrastructure and stuff, so I'm just trying to. So, so I, I'd formally request if we could get twenty percent effective from January first, but I'm just doing my job. And Justin, I totally get it, no, I get it too, and I, I know, I know, I know what you're telling. 'Cause the thing is, I got a budget now for twenty twenty, so I need to kinda know, you know. Same, let's just see, we gotta, we're gonna go down and, right, we'll check it out. But, but. You gotta. What I've seen, and you guys will see too, is state aids kick back up, so, so here in West Fargo, for example, I'll show you, 'cause a lot of it's tied to. It's tied to the, the. Right, it's population, and that's the overall general North Dakota economy, so like by twenty fifteen, it was, it ramped up when the oil out in the west side, so it, it, it bottomed out in about sixteen, but now it's starting to ramp up again. So I mean, it's, it's, it, it, it's gonna end up being a significant dollar amount, you know, going forward, so I mean, it's.
Well, my assertion is, I mean, we're gonna see, just by the fact that we have a resolution to set some increased revenue from Park Cash and Loop for some of the new developments, and we're getting numbers of developments that are gonna be. and we're getting numbers of developments that are gonna be landing, coming our way, so you're staying, you're gonna get some additional revenue from that standpoint, and I completely agree, this is something we, all learning about, right? So this is, I think it's great, maybe you do a compromise. I mean, you're asking for twenty percent, can we advance around fifteen percent?
But just to clarify, park dedication is for actual park improvements, or state aid, like twenty percent of my budget in West Fargo, it's for, it's, it's for my general fund operations. Park dedication is actually for hard improvements. State aid's actually your general fund stuff, so it's two different.
It's your operating, it's your operating fund.
Right, so it's also.
Understand, understand.
It's two different funding.
You're gonna, you're gonna get more money than you've ever gotten, the Park District's gonna get more money than they've ever gotten in the past, you know, from these new developments.
Just like you guys ran in.
Which is a good thing, which is great, because we need better parks.
Just like you guys ran into two years ago and you guys all ran, I mean, you guys had to play catch-up, I'm pretty much doing the same thing now, there's massive amounts, cause all these young families are gonna want amenities and stuff, so I mean, it's, it's something that can't be ignored.
No, I, I agree with you, I'm just trying to figure out here is how, you know, can we do this?
We can't make a decision tonight. I just don't see it.
What I would suggest is if you have parameters, and it would have to be something the Park Board and the council would need to agree upon. What we wanna do is inform you of the situation, if there was a way that we could have, actually if you guys were wanting to say fifteen percent, you could say fifteen percent, they could go back to Park Board, and if they agreed to that fifteen percent, then there you go.
Well, this, this is still a negotiating budget, we aren't finalizing any budgets, so.
We are, we are both working on our budgets. Budgets would be.
It's gotta be in by August twelve.
It has to be in by, the first meeting in August is when I'll be giving council, we have our public hearing on preliminary budget, and then I believe it's August tenth, it needs to be sent to the county for, so, so we have a little bit of time, Park Board has one more regular meeting before that, so Justin is trying to finalize his budget, or the budget for the Park Board, at this meeting, at the, towards the end of the month, unless.
Yeah, and I already told them we're gonna have to have a special meeting, cause we're just, since only meet once a month, but yeah, but regardless, I need to kinda know a direction by beginning of August.
So the question, do we, do we have an estimate of the state aid for twenty-twenty?
Yeah, it's gonna be.
We typically go conservative compared to whatever numbers we see.
So, so the League of Cities does a per capita dollar amount, and then you take a time, just your population, so horse is gonna be doing really good, cause their population keeps going up. So, using North Dakota League of Cities, you guys will be getting about two hundred thirty-three thousand in twenty-twenty.
Two hundred and thirty, so if we said fifteen percent, that translates to about, about thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, cause twenty-eight percent was sixty-five thousand, yeah, so.
Like I said, typically, if we're getting estimate saying two hundred thirty thousand, we're gonna go more conservative, so we're typically gonna budget around that two hundred ten to two hundred twenty, right in that range to be a little conservative, because those are estimates.
Yep.
Just like when we get our property tax levy amount, we're giving an estimate from the county, it's their best guess on where we're gonna fall, and we try to go a little under that, because we know that those numbers are gonna fluctuate a little bit. So I do, you, you still get the funding, the state aid, if you budget two hundred twenty thousand, and they're saying their estimate is two hundred thirty, you're still gonna get that revenue, it's just that, that's how we would have it budgeted.
Just keep in mind, technically, the park should have been getting it for the last twenty years.
But the park never requested it.
I can guarantee you, we're not gonna give any back.
Oh, I didn't ask for, I didn't ask for the back, I'm just saying.
That's what you're stating, you're stating they haven't gotten it in twenty years, so what's the, so we need.
No, I'm just saying, when you're, when you're fracturing, these numbers are just taken consideration.
I know, but to go from zero to twenty-eight percent is staggering. Number two, just, hold on a second, number two is, who says the next person through that door isn't gonna be the fire department? So for us to make a decision tonight on that, and knowing that somebody else is gonna be knocking on our door about it.
You, you will likely have that.
Horrible of us to make the decision, I understand, you're under a time crunch to get it done, and I understand that, so we need to give you a decision quickly, and I'm not against, we need to do something.
But we still, we have to talk about it, cause we can't make a decision tonight, it's.
Right, no, I know.
You gotta look at your own global budget.
Yeah, we weren't trying to know anything until we start getting some numbers on that.
But can we, can we agree on a general guideline? We don't necessarily have to finalize the numbers, can we, you know, give Justin a, a number that we're thinking about from a budget standpoint?
We'd still be throwing a dart at the wall.
And we're, we're doing that through the whole month of July. I mean, that's, that's all part of, that's all part of the, well, that's all part of the budgeting process, right?
My, my suggestion, because if you're trying to give a budgetary number, is budget to ten, and then if you're able to work out a higher amount or a different amount, then you at least have the ten, if you're open to at least giving ten percent.
Well, I think that would be acceptable.
Yeah, I think we should look at a, a scale over time. We're going from zero to something, so if it's ten, and then fifteen, and then twenty or thirty years, or whatever, however we start at that, we cap it out at a certain amount.
Yeah, I feel like start slow, I mean, I, you just came on, but the Park Board's been here, and we've been, you know, the city has money.
Right, it's, it's no one's fault, nobody knew about it, I mean, that's the whole point of them getting me on board, just to, I'm not blaming them.
We'll get you something, okay? It just may not be the full monkey that you want.
Considering going from zero.
Yeah, so let's, so like, let's just work with a ten percent number for now.
Okay.
Work with a ten percent number from a budget standpoint, we'll see where it goes.
Lucas, you had something you wanted to?
Nope.
Okay, um.
Nothing here, nothing to see.
Let's do that then, and we're gonna wind up having to have another meeting on this anyway, prior to.
Yeah, we will.
You know.
So we'll budget ten.
Let's do that for.
Well, Justin is able to go back to the Park Board, if they're okay, if, if we could reach that agreement, then it would be something we'd bring back to council of probably some sort of agreement or resolution or something.
Yep.
The matter of, just outline the parameters, if you're wanting to do a phased approach, we'll work out that phased approach. Like I said, we'll start at ten and then work our way up from there, so.
Okay, Justin, you got anything else on that one you wanna talk about? Okay, alright, thanks for, thanks for presenting that. Yep, everything's changing, right?
Yep. Good, I'll get them, a lot of them here now, so. It's all goodness, it's all goodness. Appreciate you work on this, it's not easy.
Alright, so on to the next one, let's see, who's, who's got this, Lucas, you got this one?
I don't, I think I'm gonna turn this one over to Jim.
First thing we have is water sewer storm improvement district two thousand nineteen dash seven, which is Maple Lake Estates. What we're gonna do today is amend the engineer's report, after discussion with the developer and looking into the construction, they, it was proposed to do this over two seasons, do this over two phases, so we'd have one phase of that project be the underground and the dirtwork. If you're not familiar with it, the site is south of One Earth Avenue, west of County Route Seventeen, it is in the flood plain, so there's a significant amount of fill that needs to be brought into it, so the developer, understanding that, would like to get all the dirtwork done and the underground work done, let it sit for a winter, get through the freeze saw, address any of that, and then pave it in, in the upcoming two thousand twenty year. So this report just outlines the phasing between the, going through a single year construction to a two-year phased approach, and then it breaks out the costs. So the cost now for this one, phase one, which will be the underground and the bringing up of the site, is roughly around five million dollars, four nine nine six estimate, and then phase two, I've got two versions in there, one for asphalt, which is the one point six million, and concrete, which is just a shade over two million, based on estimates. So that's what this report does, it's just, like I said, cleans up what they had originally proposed to be one year, now two years, and then adjusts the costs accordingly, so.
The cost went up, you said?
The co, this cost is based, this, the first estimate we did on this was based on in April, and this one is current to the plans now.
Okay, just because of the cost of materials and so forth?
We, we look at, we look at the bidding environment, and then we look at, this is a little more detail in, in the numbers, so, yes. So we would need a motion to approve the amended engineer's report, if he so chooses.
You got a question?
The amended engineer's report.
Second. Brian makes a motion, Dave does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries on to part B.
And the second is authorize development of plan specifications, as you're aware, this has been petitioned by the developer to move forward with the development through special improvement district, so the next step is authorizing the plan specs. So moved.
Okay, Dave makes a motion, Brian does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, move that along, man, Joe.
And I don't have them here for you to approve, Dave.
What's that?
I said I don't have them here for you to approve.
Alright, so number thirteen, Matt, you are up.
This is the second reading for the rezone of Hess First Edition. You heard this, two weeks ago, this is the subdivision of approximately ten acres in the far northeast corner of town, subdividing it into five acres, all to R one. It should be noted that there was a long list of conditions that were requested of the applicant per, the preliminary plat hearing two weeks ago, and the applicant and I are moving forward on, working with them to address those, and that's moving forward in my perspective very well. So this second reading would just rezone that lot to all the five lots there at R one.
And nothing's changed since we chatted about this with the first reading, correct?
I'm sorry?
Nothing's changed with this?
No, no, this is just the second reading of the rezone.
Yep.
Other than it led over the preliminary plat, I'm assuming all these edits and so forth are changed, are?
Yeah, we're, well, with the preliminary plat is being revised, the circle got bigger to accommodate fire trucks and things like that, so.
They clear on who's doing snow removal in that area? That it's not the city, right?
Private driver.
That was stressed in the fire commission.
I figured it was, so, okay.
Here in meeting.
Okay, do you, got any other questions, otherwise we'll accept the motion here.
Motion to approve the second reading.
Okay, Brian, you did a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Lucas, you got fourteen.
Yeah, I can handle this one, Mr. Mayor.
Alright.
This one, I just request that you authorize the resolution directing the assessments to be levied. What this does is this kicks us in gear to begin the assessment process, so it triggers the engineer to prepare a preliminary assessment list, and then it triggers us to schedule a meeting with the special assessment commission to go over these lists. So the first one that we have be tonight is for water sewer storm in street improvement district twenty eighteen dash three, which is Terra Gardens, and that one, the bonds for that one are three million, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So I just need you to approve the resolution directing that those assessments be levied.
Now, does this include the redo that they did out there then too? So that's all included in this?
The sixty, I mean, the, the, what do you mean, the renovation?
Relevation change.
So this project was bonded for last year.
Yep.
And so that's a set amount, so they have whatever amount of money to, yeah, the contingent is built into that three point three million.
Got it, that's, I just want to double check that. Okay. Have they got any other questions?
So the assessment committee has reviewed, approved all these for that, no?
This, this is triggering that, so now.
Yeah, this is triggering that process.
You're saying, yep, it's time that we levy these assessments, will you guys need to give us a list, and then we go from there.
Those special assessments will be just assessed out there, right?
Correct. Because it's a new development.
Terra Garden, which is just that in all of them. So motion to create the resolution, to create this assessment district, or.
Directing assessments to be levied.
Directing the assessment committee to assess levels.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, get a second.
Second.
Okay, just a second, so I'll, I'll, we'll call this one, Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, on to the next one.
Same song and dance for the next one, Mr. Mayor, this is street improvement district twenty seventeen dash seven, Maple Lane, Maple Circle, I think, was the other one? Some maples, maple trees.
Maple Grove is the development.
Maple Grove. So this one, this one is in the amount of three hundred and five thousand dollars, so a relatively smaller one, but we still need the resolution directing that these assessments be levied.
Don't we have to go over this change order first?
We can do that after he gets through this.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so.
I, I motion that we have the resolution directing assessments to be levied.
Okay, Dave does a motion. Okay, Brian does a second. I'll roll call this one. Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, those are in favor, passes. We're going back to the.
I didn't even know I jumped the insurance. I got so excited to levy those assessments.
So you can do the next one. I'm glad we could help you out, Lucas, there really, honestly.
But the item that we so eloquently skipped over is change order number three for pavement repair on the Maple Grove subdivision, really this, we used to, bid prices for pavement removal and pavement replacement. What's new is the milling of the pavement. During construction and after, through this winter, there was more pavement that was in worse shape than what we'd originally anticipated, so before we chip sealed it, which is the, rejuvenates the pavement so we can get more life out of it, it does do any good to chip seal over bad spots. So there were two areas by, by, the first valley gutter, as you come in, the fourth valley gutter, that pavement needed to be removed, so this change order takes care of that. It also extends the completion date to July sixth, we talked about that informally last year, this formally puts it into a change order, so. I guess any questions on, I know we talked, I talked with Brendan about it and sent some emails and some correspondence on that, so.
So this is, these guys coming back out to?
Yep.
Do some additional?
Yep, it, basically it was some more pavement removal that didn't make it through the winter, and then there was some milling that was needed, needed versus complete pavement replacement.
Question, how much it is warranted, should they have known to do that before from last year?
It's, it's tough on pavement replacement, especially when you go through winter. It's, the, the patches or the bad spots were bigger than what we had originally anticipated, and it just.
The one was a spot that was deteriorating, and the first valley gutter was, had been deteriorating for years, so I think we just learned from this is push it back more.
But they should have known that when they did the work last year.
Not the contractor, I think it was something that not more showed up, it did.
It did, especially the fourth one, because that one I didn't remember being at all, and, and that one was really alligator up this year, cracked up, so.
I'd rather us do it now than.
Well, it, it's gonna extend the life of, it's gonna extend the life of the road, so, I mean, it's, it's, do it now before it causes any more damage in the future, it's just, I hate approving a change order for something, cause we gotta pay the mobilization fee and bring everyone out again to do the work, and, and they have.
And we did, I did work with them a little bit on these prices and verify.
So you, you think they did give us a discount price?
I think so, yeah, he went through it with me, and, and like I said, they kept their prices on what they could from last year, so we didn't pay anything more on, there was the mold in there, but, yeah, I think it's pretty reasonable.
Is that change order one or three?
It's actually three, it says one on here, but it should be three.
Yeah, so change order three on the.
It is three, on the agenda, it says one.
Oh, okay.
I noticed that as I was reading it.
And it's for eighty-five hundred dollars, so it's not that much. So this will be included in the special assessment district? Cause did we, did we have some leftover or some contingent funds that?
We did contingent, we filed a bond for this one too, and we do have a contingency.
Okay, so we do have some, we are increasing the size of the bond, per se. Okay, that's good.
No.
Right? Motion to approve.
Motion.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Who's on first?
Motion to approve the change order.
Second.
Dave and then Brian, does a second. Okay, I'll roll call this one. Dave and then Brian, does a second, okay, I'll roll call this one, Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, any others? Alright, number sixteen, Lucas, you got that one.
Okay, final one, Mr. Mayor, this one is street improvement district number twenty seventeen dash eight, uh, this is Northwood and Southwood. Uh, this project, the bond for this one was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. See the resolution directing the levies be assessed for this project as well.
So move.
Second.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, Chelsea does a second. Alright, we'll call it, Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Number seventeen, Brenton and Lucas, you guys.
I have a question, how many, how many dollars were the bonding due out of place or would be requesting, twenty-two, twenty-five million? When you look at all your.
Lucas.
So the, for the twenty nineteen ones, fifteen?
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and whatever you're building up here.
The ones that the city's bonding for right now for twenty nineteen is like fifteen point five or fifteen point seven?
So when you have your financial statements in your audit, that's a red flag or two, are you gonna run into any problem getting the bonds?
No.
No.
You're not going to?
Not, yeah, no.
You haven't got, have you got permanent bonds, or you just have temporary bonds now?
So the, the fifteen point five is temporary for twenty nineteen, the city has other outstanding bonds, um, for all the other projects, but what they're bonding for in twenty nineteen so far is fifteen point five.
So they might have twenty, twenty-five million dollars of the bonds outstanding, once we get this done.
Yep, but what helps the, when they sell the bonds, is it's for new development, um, so that really drives the sale of those bonds when, when, um, people are looking at buying them, they're seeing that the city's growing, so we actually had to, to do quite a bit, show a lot of information on behalf of the city to, to prove that there is that growth and that that school is driving it, so when they're selling the bonds, they're not having an issue because a lot of it is for new, new development.
Have capital and justification to get some.
Yeah, and so, city staff did, did a good job of showing that to the bonding company. And the bonds, the, the percentage turned out quite favorable, um, I'm not sure if we all are aware, but for that twenty nineteen temporary, uh, bonding was two point five percent.
Which is very low.
That's very low.
Yeah. That's good news for the city.
Yep, that was a good deal.
That's awesome.
Okay, alright, so, on seventeen.
So on the municipal judge discussion, um, it's more, more discussion tonight. At a upcoming meeting, we'll have action, is our anticipation. Uh, reached out to individual that we're talking, Mr. Coker and I were talking with earlier this year, that shown interest in being the municipal judge for the city. Uh, they are still very interested in doing that, uh, we're looking into what is the appropriate compensation, because there, there is compensation for them doing their time of being a judge and holding court. Uh, so we're looking into that right now, uh, Lucas sent me something this afternoon, so comparing it to what Centricode has for a guideline, how much we should comp, or at a minimum compensate for, and then we'll probably check around with a few other communities at municipal court to see how much they compensate, and try to find some that are similar size and, um, may have a similar amount of cases that our court could have. It's hard to say how many cases our court would have, because you just don't know. Uh, right now, how, how many citations would be brought to municipal court? Uh, how many would be issued by the deputies, things like that, so it's, at, at this point, it's very difficult to say. Um, but we are looking at the compensation side, the appointment, appointment would be done by council, or by the mayor there. Uh, and then at the next election, that position would be up for election, because it's elected upon position. So we are trying to get that resolved this month, that is our goal, to get that in place. Um, by doing so, then there's a little bit of training that individual would have to do, uh, to be up to speed with any changes in North Dakota law. Uh, we'd be working with Onset Twitchell to get the municipal court set back up. So, we currently do not have municipal court, uh, the county could hear cases on behalf of the city at this time, but it makes a, having municipal court here, we'd be able to enforce things a lot stronger.
Yeah. We need a church.
Yep.
It's long.
Anything else?
Do you want, just, do you want me to add what the actual?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, so the, the North Coast Centricode doesn't set, uh, the compensation, it says that, uh, the only requirement is that it has to be by salary, so you can't base it on the amount of fines or the amount of fees that they're getting per month, because then the judge will obviously try to find as much people or as many people as possible, to make a bigger salary, or make more wages, so you have to set it by salary. Uh, the salary cannot decrease, um, within the year, so once it's set that year, that's what it, or excuse me, the term. So once it's set during their term, that's what their compensation is. Um, and then the Supreme Court, the North Coast Supreme Court, uh, actually set guidelines for the various cities, depending on, on their size. So, uh, cities between fifteen hundred to three thousand people, which I believe is Horace. Um, minimum annual salary is three thousand ninety-six dollars. Um, and then the, the minimum monthly salary would be approximately two hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
That's for the year, three thousand per year?
Yep.
Judge, not lawyer.
Thanks for the clarification.
That is the mill, so we could go above it, what is the next level?
Okay, so the next level is.
From that next level.
Cities between three thousand and five thousand in population, um, annual salary four thousand one sixteen. Um, a month, that'd be three hundred and forty-three dollars.
So it gives you an idea of how much for that salary, uh, like I said, we're not far from that next level. So it's something we'll, we'd have to keep in mind.
And, and like Brent said earlier too, it's, it's hard to tell how often you're going to have, or that judge will have to be.
Right.
Cases, uh, when, when Vance's city editor, he told me that in twenty-seven years, they met three times. Granted, the city has changed a lot since then, so I just, I don't know.
But is that set yearly in our budget, so if we put a number down, and let's say that first year is crazy, and we go, okay, maybe next, the next year we can change that, correct?
No, next term.
The next term.
Well, we can't go down, but if we were to say, hey, this is just way more than we expected, we want to add on.
Yeah, you could go.
Next percent, we could go up in a.
Yep.
In a yearly.
Yep, you could increase. And the election would be in June, so you're really not, that next term would happen halfway through next year anyways.
And it's a two-year or quarter?
It's a, I believe it's a two. I'll say it's a two.
Sounds like Lucas has another job.
No, he can't do that, though. He's too busy farming.
That's true. Uh, I don't know off the top of my head what the term is.
We could have that for you at the time of requesting an appointment.
But I mean, from a budgeting standpoint, we know we need this.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we could say, let's include some recommended funding for a municipal judge in the twenty, FY twenty budget.
We would budget for municipal judge, municipal court activities, and, uh, prosecution also.
Right.
And just so we have something in place.
Yep.
So we're covered, yeah.
Cause there's gonna be some revenue, ideally, it might be thirty dollars, you don't.
You, you, it's hard to say.
Right, but it'd be something, we have a budgetary there for.
But by doing that, the city would, uh, any citations or anything, so if the deputies and
Right.
issued a citation for traffic or whatever, that would go to the municipal courts, right, the city, instead of the county, right now, it does go to the county. So it does give that, and.
Okay. So.
So, no action, no.
No action at this point to?
Is an update and discussion of just letting you know where we're at with the judge position. Uh, we're trying to get this in place, uh, as soon as we can, and, uh, Lucas and I are working together to get the municipal court reestablished. So, well, I was really hoping we'd be able to get it in place here tonight, but it's gonna be putting cart before the horse, if we did that.
So is there a chance we could have this ready for next?
A good, I, I believe there's a pretty good chance that we could have it ready for the next meeting.
Okay.
So, it was a compensation question, and, uh, just coordinating about getting the court set up.
Okay.
Yep, sir.
Is that going to be like one day a month, twice setting?
It would likely be one day a month, and then, yeah, if that, uh, it depends if there's cases that they have to hear.
Well, we would just have a posted day.
We'd probably, we'd probably have a set one day a month, you know, like we have council meetings the first and third, so it'd be a certain day of the month. And it might be in the afternoon or evening where, uh, they hold it, and if there's no cases to be heard, then it would be canceled.
Yeah, so just an example, uh, city of West Fargo, they meet every Wednesday. Um, and then they have, uh, internet or online, um, hearings Monday morning with just a judge. And then the city of Castleton, I think they do once or twice a month, and then Kindred, on the lower end, meets only when there's a, when there's an issue, which I haven't heard of that coming up yet.
In my experience before with municipal courts, uh, from the city, I've seen before where they'll have traffic and all, all other non-domestic, or all other, you know, lesser serious courts, where, or citations or issues would be heard twice a month, and then your more serious ones, where it's like a domestic issue or a larger, like animal control case or something, that would be heard on a third day. So that way, those bigger cases didn't interfere with the ones that take only a few minutes to hash out, so.
Okay, anybody got any other comments, questions? Yeah, let's get that budget, we know we're gonna need it. So, okay, Jim, you're up.
Alright, we have the status reports, I don't know if you can bring up, you got it up, good. Uh, we'll just catch the high points, we talked about some of them as we've gone along here. Uh, water replacement project, you approved the final lesson earlier, so that project is done now, we've gotta do just a couple cleanup things for a final dot, final close out of that, and it is, it is done. Um, let's see, we talked a little bit about that. Um, Maple Grove, pavement repair, repair was completed last week, seating hydromelch has started, I guess the seating has a hydromelch, it's been going as well.
No, he hasn't done any.
Right.
Uh, they came out and cleaned up a bunch of spots, and then.
And then he seeded it, but he wasn't able to hydromelch it.
Okay, so he did seed?
He did seed, what he was able to work out along that first drain, and the second one, and along, he didn't do anything on the backside yet.
Sure.
It was too wet, he was trying to work that material up to get it to dry out.
Yep.
Uh, the fountain has been installed and is flowing water. Uh, seal coat is scheduled for the end of this week or the first part of next week, Aztec is doing the seal coat, and they've got a, uh, they're doing Fargo next week, so they're gonna try to squeeze these little, two little jobs for Northwood and Southwood at the same time, so. Either be before they're, the Fargo ones are in that same time, either end of this week, beginning of next week, so I guess commit a little next week too. Park and Rec Trail Grant, so, I reached out to, this project's bid through Park and Rec, it's not bid locally or through us. Um, I reached out to them a week before the bid opening to find out a list of plan holders, and figure out if I have to do any soliciting for contractors. They got back to me three days before the bid opening and said that we didn't have any plan holders. So after a couple frantic phone calls, and some discussion with some contractors, we did an addendum to push the bid opening back to the tenth of July, and I've got five bid o, five people holding plans now, and so, five contractors, you just weren't aware of it, now, now they are. So, uh, the plans will be opened on, or the bids will be opened on July fifteenth, yeah, or I mean, the tenth, with considering award on July fifteenth, so. Yeah.
Sounds good, thank you for following up on that.
Yeah.
I'm wondering about that.
Yeah, cause if we don't let it go, and I had any bits pushing those back a month, basically.
Right.
But then we re-advertise and do everything else, so typically I try to look, try to figure, get a plan holders list a week or so ahead of time and.
So there, there, yeah, and this could be a product that would be done this year.
Yes, plan is have done this year, not in time for me to base, but done this year.
But, but this is dependent on the roundabout work, right?
No, this is independent of roundabout, this is south of the roundabout. Let's go start to the school up to eighty-first Spring Drive.
Oh, okay.
So this is independent of that.
Okay.
That's right. Can we get an update on the roundabout then, and maintenance of our E two roads?
Yes, so the roundabout is seventeen point nine percent complete. The paper had an article in it today showing an aerial photo of it, so if you haven't seen that yet, it's kind of interesting, this is pretty recent too, this was, uh, probably late last week, just by looking at what they've got complete. Uh, Cass County is doing the construction engineering, so I only get bits and pieces at our contractor meetings on Tuesdays, but, um, from what I see and from what I've told, everything is progressing as expected, they're on schedule in their minds. So, um, ma- maintenance of the hall road, it's stressed every week at the, at the meetings, I know Brent's been on the county about that. The contractor kind of real, waits for the county to tell them to do it, kinda, right Brent?
Pretty much, and even then, it isn't.
So Brent's been really hounding the county about getting out there and getting it done.
Can they bring some more material out there to fill in some of the potholes and the, the divots in the road? Because apparently they're just bringing the grader over and it's not doing anything.
They, they weren't.
From the side more, they leave chunks on the side.
I was told today that they were to be pulling.